Two thousand eight. We'll start with the agenda if we could, and on the agenda, the first order of business on the agenda is presentations, and we're going by alphabetical order if we could. These are the presentations from people that we asked to come back and present some of the things that they wanted to present and things that we wanted to ask them more questions on. So, we will start by having Black Hills Council of Local Governments. And what we're doing, people that are presenting, we are having you sit at the table with us so we don't have to turn around at the podium. So, whoever is representing Black Hills Council for Local Governments can come up front, and there is a microphone for you to speak.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Do we need a roll call?
Do we need to start with roll call? Jackie? Okay. Sorry, sir, give us just a minute, we need to do a roll call. Ms. Jackie?
Martenson. Bad Talk.
Here.
Harlbutt. Krepke.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Wyffenbach.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Kroger.
He actually is here.
Okay. He's getting supper.
Quaker.
Here.
Lacroix.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Jackie. Thank you for reminding me of that. Mr. Chapman? If we're ready to have the presentations, Council, we'll go ahead, and if you'd state your name, sir?
Blaze Emerson, Black Hills Council of Local Governments. I am the...
Okay. Light sign now. I'll start over for Jackie so she knows. Blaze Emerson, Black Hills Council of Local Governments. Many of you know that I just took over the position of Executive Director here basically two weeks ago. I do have the former director in the audience, Van Lindquist. If you do have some more historical questions that I don't know about, I have him as my backup tonight. So, I just want to, I don't have a handout or anything because I wasn't sure exactly what was all going to be requested tonight, so if you do need some additional information, I can provide that. I just want to give a little background for those people who don't know that much about the Black Hills Council of Local Governments, what we are and what our purpose is. We are a technical assistance agency that was basically created through, in nineteen seventy-two, through a joint powers agreement between a number of counties and municipalities. And those counties are basically Harding County, Butte County, Lawrence County, Mead County, Pennington County, Custer County, Fall River, and Bennett County. Shannon County kind of falls in there because Shannon County doesn't really have any administrative since they're through Fall River, so they kind of are in there as kind of that pseudo county. And all the municipalities there within that area are all basically our members of our organization. And why we were created to help provide that technical assistance to those communities and those counties for special projects and to provide those services that maybe those smaller communities don't have, that expertise, to provide that special project planning, those type of assistance to those communities and to Rapid City, to help with that type of planning. What we do a lot of is been focusing quite a bit on utility financing. We help a lot of communities. We've helped Rapid City with some different loan packages in the past with whether it's the state revolving loan fund through DNR, both with water and wastewater, the consolidated program through DNR. So, a lot of those packages, we help put those financing packages together. So, if a city wants to come in and need a new reservoir, we can help put that package and help them finance that package and help them kind of go through that. We are also, the district also has, is the technical assistance arm for the state's Community Development Block Grant Fund or Program. City of Rapid City is an entitlement city, so they do not, you know, go through the state funding. But there's another whole set of funding out there that Housing and Urban Development gives out that is used for the rest of the state. Both Rapid City and Sioux Falls are the only two entitlement cities. You guys get your own pool of money that you guys use. But the other communities can then apply for grants through the state GOED office to basically look at projects through that funding source. There are certain requirements for that, so that's kind of what we help them through, through that application process, through the administration of that process. The other thing that we, I think we do a very good job of and also kind of help is kind of create this idea of providing regional information to all of our members. For those of you who have attended our meetings over the past, we've had focus in this last year, you know, whether it was the incentu exploration of uranium down in Beaumont area to see how that process is working, the state housing program and those different things. We always have kind of the pre-stip meeting at our July meeting to kind of go over transportation issues that we've worked on hard over the years for the different communities. So, we kind of provide that regional planning base for the area. So, I said I wasn't going to say a whole lot because I would prefer to kind of answer questions, and like I say, I do have, if you have some more historic questions, I do have Van Lindquist in the audience to kind of answer those. So, I'll just open it up for...
Thank you, sir. We do have a question from Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Blaze, for coming tonight. I do have a couple of questions, Blaze. Years ago, it's probably four or five years ago, the city, the Black Hills Council Local Governments supervised the Rapid Transit Program or the, you know, the Rapid Transit Director reported up through Black Hills Council. And it was my understanding that that was one of the reasons for the twenty-eight or thirty thousand dollar appropriation, and the city has since changed that reporting relationship, and Black Hills Council is no longer involved in supervision of Rapid Transit. So, my question to you is, is, is my understanding of that correct?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Let me go back. When the council was originally created and Rapid City was one of the founding members, it was created through to be basically that, what I have talked about, that Technical Assistance District. When Rapid Transit came along in that aspect, it was one of those services that we said we could kind of be the umbrella for originally for that. And like I say, I may defer a little bit to Van here, but that was not the primary purpose of that, of the actual, what we call assessment, or your payment or dues, however you want to say that. That wasn't the primary reason for that funding. That was to do other projects above and beyond that, and I believe, I'll defer to Van, but that was for the transit was mainly a pass-through through our organization.
Basically thinking in terms of two pots, okay?
Sir.
The assessment...
Van, if you could state your name and...
I'm Van Lindquist.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Former Executive Director for the Black Hills Council. When Rapid City got into the transit program, it came to the council and asked us whether we would manage it for them. And we said yes that we would, but it would have to be under contract. So, you got, you had essentially two pots of money. You had the assessment pot, okay, which is nothing more than dues to belong to the organization. And then you had a contract, and there was a very specific contract to provide the management services for the transit, and that was separate over and above the assessment. So, it's, they were separate, but always tied together because of your membership.
Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Quaker?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. And I don't need this tonight if you don't have it readily available, but if possible, by the time we meet again, if I could get a list of the funding sources from, you know, how much Harding, Butte, Lawrence, Mead, you know, what all your members pay in for dues and figure out what our percentage is.
Okay. I can give you a brief summation, okay? What we've done for the council, and we've looked at it, and across the state, they've used different methods, but what we've looked at is what would be the most fair method, and we settled on a per capita assessment. That was based on nineteen eighty population, and I've got to historically give you some background there. Back in eighty-two, you know, we changed the mission of the council, we changed the way we did business, okay? And part of that was putting in place a new assessment method. But we used the nineteen eighty census, okay? We've used the nineteen eighty census since that, since eighty-two to today, okay? And in fact, Rapid City gets a special break on that because it also got tied up with some dealings between Rapid City and Pennington County that I don't want to get into, okay? That if Pennington County picked up this, Rapid City would pick up that, and that worked fine until Pennington County pulled out of the deal, okay? And that basically left the council short on that per capita assessment, but the management committee said, "No, we're not going to go back to Rapid City and ask for additional money because of an agreement that was broken by Pennington County," okay? So, actually, your assessment wouldn't work out to be that per capita, it would be less than because of that foiled agreement that existed between Rapid City and Pennington County.
And it's just to add a little bit to that. This year's assessment is at eighty-six cents per population based on that nineteen eighty population. We're going up to ninety cents per population, per person, based on that nineteen eighty census for two thousand nine. About, was that three, five years ago, the council enacted kind of a, they had not changed their assessment for, what was it, twenty years, twenty-five years?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years. We had kept it at the same amount. We finally said, I was sitting on the council as a member at that time, we finally said it's time to catch up with some inflation and bring that up a little bit. So, we enacted a, basically a five-year plan to bring that up to, and I...
What it boils down to was using the CPI, which you're allowed to do, and then two percent to try to adjust for some of that past shortfall because from eighty-two to ninety, two thousand and five, you know, that purchasing power had lost by seventy-eight percent, okay? So, the council said, you know, it was a valid effort on our part to hold the due structure down, but in fact, at some point, it starts to be a negative, and it probably was a negative far before, you know, five years ago, but...
Mr. Quaker, is there a certain question that would help you with this budget session that is something that is going to get to the bottom line for the...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
The city, as you know, also pays dues to the SDML, South Dakota Municipal League. Is there overlap or redundancy there? I mean, in terms of value-added service, what do you provide?
I don't believe so because I think we both serve a different type of function. We provide more direct assistance to the city as in, and I'll use an example here. The city is looking at, you know, we pay pretty close attention to what's going on in the papers and stuff, but you're looking at some major water improvements. So, you guys are probably looking at some different funding packages for that. We would then help as an assistance to put those packages together, basically one, help relieve staff time, you know? Being a former employee of Rapid City, I know what your staff goes through and the workload that they're under. So, we can provide and help, you know, reduce that staff level workload on it, but also then provide that assistance to get those packages that we do on a daily basis, so we're very familiar with that process. So, that's the difference there, Sam.
Can I make one point, okay? And one of the principles that the council stands on is that we're never, ever going to come in and tell you what you need, okay? You tell us what you need, and then we'll go to work on that for you, okay? That's happened many, many times. Where Rapid City has approached the council and said, "We've got this particular problem, can you work on it for us?" And our answer has always been yes, okay? And that's the major difference between your membership to the Municipal League and the membership to the Black Hills Council, is we're more, as Blaze said, the more direct approach.
Mr. Quaker, would that be all? Any other questions or discussion for Black Hills Council? City Council? Bill Krepke?
Thank you. You've alluded to a few items that you've done in the past. Could you be more specific? What have you, you know, what kind of bang for the buck has Rapid City gotten from...
I guess I'm going to defer to Van a little bit more. He has much more, a little better history on that than I do.
Okay. I'm not sure where we want to start because the list is huge, okay? And one of the things that I've always told our members is never judge us within a short timeframe because in a short timeframe, we have an excellent chance of checking up short because the question is, what have you asked for lately? Okay? If you haven't asked for anything, we're not going to come in and tell you this is what you need to do, okay? But on that basis, I can go back and I can highlight everything from flood recovery work, infrastructure work, to when Rapid City was first looking at Ellsworth, okay, and the first jointly, joint land, land you studied needed to be done, who did Rapid City come to? They came to the council and said, "Can you put this together? Can you staff this?" And we said, "Yes, we would." And we not only staffed it, but we put insignificant dollars, you know, to pay for the consultant. You know, that's an example. We did the same thing with air quality. You know, the transit was another one. It wasn't something we wanted to do, okay? It was something you requested us do, okay? So, you know, soil stabilization after the Westbury Fire, okay? You know, even though, you know, the work was done under the umbrella of West Dakota, West Dakota has the master contract with the Black Hills Council. So, they're in essence, one and the same staff-wise.
Thank you, Van.
So, you know, that was a major effort there, you know, so I can talk for a long time, and I don't think you'd want me to do that.
Okay. Bill, do you have a follow-up? Okay. Thank you, Van and Blaze, for coming. We appreciate your visiting us today and talking.
Thank you.
I think that'll be everything.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Next, we have Black Hills Vision. I think the mayor wanted to speak on this first, but you didn't want to speak first? Okay. Pete Capitan, I think, is speaking for them. Thank you, Pete, for coming tonight.
You bet. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, I want to, first of all, thank you very much for having us here and also for not only your past support and pledge to the Black Hills Vision, but also the support that you've given us for the last four years. We're here tonight to ask the city to continue on its pledge. About four years ago, we had a pledge from the city for three hundred and seventy-five thousand. We've got one year left of that commitment. Just a little bit of background from the Black Hills Vision was started about four years ago primarily to be a fundraising arm, to help retain jobs, grow jobs, increase air traffic, and help support low to moderate income housing. And we did that. We had set out a goal to raise three million dollars. We were successful in reaching that goal, thanks in part to the City of Rapid City. We've gotten support throughout the Black Hills region for those initiatives. It is more of a regional focus than Rapid City's focus, but by and large, Rapid City's probably benefited the most from the efforts. We focused on, in the fundraising for Ellsworth Task Force and saving Ellsworth, we raised funds for the Black Hills, yeah, the Black Hills Incubator, which is located at Tech, Air Service Task Force, which is to increase air traffic at our regional airport. Our economic development and tech corridor was kind of a combination of helping the Home State Lab become successful as well as developing an additional economic enterprise or corridor for Western South Dakota, and then also to help support low to moderate income housing. So, we're basically here tonight, out of all of the, I guess, members of the Black Hills Vision, anybody that, any organization or group that gave fifty thousand or more was on, is on our board. And we've got a number of businesses in the communities, in all of the communities in Western South Dakota. We've got four counties that have, are participating, and eight cities that are participating. And those members who are, all of them are on the board, but as far as on the executive board, are represented on the board. We do have a number of the board members for the Black Hills Vision in the audience, if they'd be willing to stand up, and then if any of them have any comments, or they'd be welcome to come on up.
Thanks, guys, for coming. We appreciate that. I have a couple of questions, just for the people in the audience and the people that don't know, what's one year's left? How much was that funding?
Seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
The original commitment was for three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And the goal for that seventy-five thousand from city funds was going to be used for what, Pete?
Actually, it goes into the pot of the three million dollars, and we've got, as I mentioned, the organizations that are part of that, and all of them, from a budgetary standpoint, have been allocated certain money, and it is being handed out as we collect our funds as well.
So, at this point, there's not a goal, there's just one pot, and then you guys kind of dish it out to where people need it, but there isn't a certain funding that you're doing right now that you're looking for the cash to go to?
No. I mean, we originally did the fundraising for three million dollars and identified of that three million, what pocket goes to which organization and have committed to those organizations.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Ron Wyffenbach, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, one of the questions that Pete, that I would have for your organizations is that understanding that basically it's a five-year plan, organization set up to, looks like for the air traffic increase, helping with Ellsworth Air Force Base Task Force, the incubator, the Home State Corridor, and moderate and low-income housing. And it seems to be, after living in this community for quite some time, that some, a lot of those goals obviously have been met and achieved, and after this five-year plan is over, what happens to your organization?
Well, we haven't really made a decision yet. We will continue. I think it's been the general census of our members that it has been a very successful endeavor, and we're not going to go out and raise money without having a, an idea or a need. We are looking at this time of doing, at least from our corporate sponsors or our members, looking at them to continue their five, you know, their annual plan, pledge, and focusing on what we call the, maybe the opportunity capture fund. And within that organization, focus on different things that we feel is essential in Western South Dakota. At least at this time, that focus would probably be on the Ellsworth Air Force Base area, the infrastructure around Ellsworth Air Force Base. We've got to protect the, continue to protect the airspace, both coming in and leaving the runway area, as well as developing the water system out there and the sewer system out there. So, that's probably going to be our focus, but we don't have a plan yet, or hasn't been approved by the board.
I have one of administrative type of question, a lot of the organizations that we have maybe. The question I would have for you administratively would be, what percentage of your three million dollars went towards paying officers and those types of people in your organization?
We do not have any officers or no paid help other than some secretarial help. We have had a secretary administrative assistant to help us with our minutes of our meetings and kind of keeping track of all of that, but we have no paid support. Mark Merchant has been a loaned executive in a sense to us, but he has not received any payment from Black Hills Vision's funds.
I'd just like to make one comment.
Head, Ron?
Since you have a lot of your board members or others, like, take the opportunity to thank you for your guys' vision, seeing the vision, had a concise target, looks like, judging from the Air Force Base still being here, the Home State Mine coming here, which I think is a dream, and it takes time for fruition for that to happen. The incubator, which I assume is on the right track, and low to moderate income housing, I'm sure that we still making strides in that area, but really clear, concise vision that you had over the five years, and it looks to me like you achieved a lot of those goals, so I'd just like to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, for your comments. Mike Derby, did you want to speak?
Anything else, Pete?
And then your...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Mike Derby. I'm a past chairman of Black Hills Vision and currently on the executive board, and I'm here on, basically on behalf of Mark Merchant. He gives his regrets that Mark is out of town, wish he could have been here. He's done an amazing job keeping Black Hills Vision rolling the last couple of years. We are headed down the home stretch for Black Hills Vision. I've been involved for five years. The sign of a good campaign in any of you that have done fundraising is the pledge collection, and we've collected over ninety percent of our pledges. And this pledge that Rapid City, we hope you do fund, represents about a third of what we have left to collect for our campaign. The results speak for themselves. The communities throughout the Black Hills that have invested in Black Hills Vision have continued to do it, and we're very excited as we close this first phase of our campaign. So, I just want to thank you for your past support. I want to thank Mark Merchant for his leadership. I want to thank Jim McKeon, Chairman, President of the Chamber of Commerce, Bob Demersman, Rapid City Economic Development, and Jim Doolittle from Black Hills Community Economic Development for having the vision to create a regional approach to economic development. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. We do have some questions. Karen Olson, please.
I was just going to ask about Mark Merchant's role, and I, so his company really represents a donation of his time, and I was going to comment on the fact there's no paid staff for this.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Any other questions from the council? Bill Krepke?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate how important Black Hills Vision has been to Rapid City and the region over the past few years. Alderman Wyffenbach made the, captured it pretty well when he made his comments, and I think it'd be very foolish if we didn't support you. I'm not sure if, you know, if I completely understand the true vision and the true importance of what Black Hills Vision is all about. I know it's a global kind of thing, and I know it's not, it's not your job to bring X, Y, Z company into Rapid City. Maybe you can, maybe you can just expand on some of that thoughts if you can, just to give us that global perspective.
Well, I think a number of years ago, we saw a number of different areas that needed some attention. The most eminent was Ellsworth Air Force Base and getting that not on the list, and then if got on the list, get it off the list. And that was, not that we did that as Black Hills Vision, but what we did was we raised money to help support Ellsworth Task Force that did that. There was just a number of different needs throughout the community that we needed to try and raise money for, and we felt that by going out and having a pocket in a sense of money, very similar to Sioux Falls has Forward Sioux Falls, where they raise money as a, as a community for different projects in the community. We expanded ours a little bit and made it more of a Black Hills region because we felt that size has some importance, and we felt that what it benefits, one portion of the Black Hills area benefits all of it. So, that's why we kind of made it more of a regional look than just a community look.
Do you have a follow-up? Ms., Mr. Krepke, or are you done? Okay. Ms. Martenson, please.
Yes, I'd have a question. How do you arrive at the requested donation of three seventy-five that you're requesting from the council? How is that calculated?
That's a great question. We originally, when we were putting together the budget to raise three million, we went out and raised, we had hired a private fundraiser, and we got to about a million dollars. And then Mark Merchant and I hit the road, took the show on the road to raise the additional two million. And we had some other communities that had stepped to the plate at the fifty thousand dollar level. They wanted to be on the board of Black Hills Vision, and so then we just did the math. We said, "You know what? If Custer, if Custer's going to step to the plate for fifty thousand, or if Lead is going to step to the plate for fifty thousand, what's the pro-rated amount? What should a city the size of Rapid City, basically, with the size of budget they have, the sales tax it's generated, what would be a fair amount for the city of Rapid City?" And we did a little math and figured that three hundred and seventy-five thousand, you know, over a five-year period would be appropriate. Based on Lead, I was just up in Lead two weeks ago, and they committed for the next year. and they committed for the next year for their ten thousand. So that's kind of how we came to it. Thank you very much for asking.
Ms. Patty, do you have any more questions? Okay. Ms. Olson?
Pete, did you move forward? Is there any chance that the Black Hills Vision will weigh in on the discussion of additional missions for Ellsworth, particularly the bombing range discussion that's kind of moving forward?
That hasn't necessarily been a focus of the Black Hills Vision at this time. As I commented, we, it's a fundraising arm, in essence. We have taken over a little bit more of a, a little bit bigger approach than just a fundraising arm as it pertains to economic development. But primarily, our funds have gone to Ellsworth Task Force, and it's been their focus. And they are, I know, actively looking at additional missions. And that's something that, when Black Hills Vision decides what its future's going to look like in terms of opportunities in the future, Ellsworth Task Force may very well be a part of it as well.
Do you have a follow-up, Ms. Karen? Ron Wyffenbach, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have another administrative question that you may not be able to answer tonight. But you said that our seventy-five thousand from Rapid City was ninety percent of the pledges that were left to be collected. Is there any other organization at this time in the region that's uncommitted to their pledge?
No, let me clarify that, Councilman. We've collected over two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so of the two hundred and fifty thousand, plus or minus, seventy-five thousand of that is the pledge from Rapid City. So about a third, about a third of the remaining pledges is... And it's a wide variety of private sector. If Mark was here, he could tell you exactly who's still finishing out the pledges. A lot of the corporate community prepaid their pledges. They're done. They got done in three or four years. We understand we have to come back every year to the counties and the cities, because you can't pre, can't appropriate outside of one year. So we understand that, so we appreciate this opportunity. Madam Chair, I do want to clarify one thing, though, in regards to the staff. We do not have a paid executive director or president, but Louise Walters, if I left here without thanking her, she handles the clerical, day-to-day minutia, and we do it on a shoestring, and she does it part-time. But if you know Louise, she does an excellent job, and I just want to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions? Pete Kappa?
I'd like to just make one point of clarification. We have not written off ten percent of our pledges. It's been less than probably seven thousand dollars out of the three million that we've written off, that people have let us know that they're not going to be able to fulfill their pledge at this time.
Thank you, Pete and Mike. Counsel, do we have any other questions? If not, I appreciate you guys coming, and the people representing Black Hills Vision, we appreciate you coming tonight. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the CVB, please. If you guys would state your names.
Michelle Lentz, Executive Director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Thank you, Michelle.
I'm Dan Tribby, incoming Chair of the CVB.
Thanks, Dan, for coming. We appreciate you guys coming tonight and answering questions from us. Go ahead and say your speech, if you'd like.
Well, to be honest, I'm not sure what you would like to hear. I know that unfortunately, I was not able to be here last week when you had the budget hearings, and I know that there were a number of questions. I hope that I answered all of those questions. I did send a packet of information to Jim with what I understood were all of the questions that you did have. I guess I would just like to reiterate that the Convention and Visitors Bureau is the agency that produces much of the revenue, that brings in the sales taxes, the BBB taxes, and now, of course, the bid tax. And I just think that we are, we are so proud of what we do with the money that we've had to do it. And of course, you all told us for many, many years, because we would come to you many, many times and ask for more funding, and you suggested that we find an additional source of funding. And we worked for many years to find that additional source of funding. First of all, trying to increase the BBB tax statewide, that did not work. We were very close, but it did not work, and so we went to the bid tax. That has been tremendous in terms of the money that it has brought into the community and to the CVB for marketing. And I hope that you all have been reading some of the information, the articles, and you're seeing the taxes are increasing, the sales taxes, as well as the BBB taxes. We're not going to take all of the credit for it, but we have got to believe that it has made a difference. And I certainly would hate to go backwards. We didn't ask for a large increase. We asked for a three percent total increase, which includes the BBB tax as well as the general fund. I will not tell you that I did not expect to eventually lose that general fund money. We received it a number of years ago, actually quite a bit more than what we have this year, or had last year, the seventy-five thousand. But I truly don't know how we would have continued to do what we did without that additional funding for those years. Now, we've done what you asked us to do, and we've come up with an additional funding, but we certainly can't go backwards. I know that there was a question in regards to the bid budget versus the CVB budget, and what is spent on marketing versus administration. There has been a revision to that budget, and I can get a copy of that to you, but we've, there was still a small amount of money that was under the CVB budget, which is from you, that was used for some of the trade shows, just some of the miscellaneous items. We have moved that all over into the bid budget. So if there's a question about that, I would be happy to answer. But I just hope that you understand that our organization is a very instrumental part of helping the community to be successful with not only visitors, but meeting planners. And of course, we're working very closely with Destination Rapid City. If I may tell a very quick story about being at some educational seminars a week ago, and I would guess that six out of the eight speakers that we had talked, I never heard this before, but they're talking about the DMO, which is what we are, Destination Marketing Organization, has got to be more active in your destination, the products that you have to sell. And this is another reason why we're here, not only to bring the visitors and the meeting planners into Rapid City, but also to help make that destination something that not only the local people are proud of and want to enjoy, but also, of course, for our visitors.
Thank you, Michelle. Counsel, do we have any questions for Michelle or Dan Tribby? Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle, my question is, is has the bid budget been used to hire employees?
No. And you see, you should have a copy of both last year's budget and this year's proposed budget. And you will see that under the administration that we had to, about twelve thousand dollars that was listed under the bid money, but that was used only for, if we needed to use it, it was used for some office equipment, some legal fees, phone expense, et cetera. But none of that was used for salaries. Well, once Dan and Sandy came back to the office and told me what the questions were that you had, we've moved that over into the CVB, so there's absolutely no administration coming out of that bid budget. And every single bit of marketing is moved into the bid budget. So there is a very slight revision in that, which I would be happy to provide for you.
If I could ask a follow-up?
Go ahead.
So is it theoretically possible for employees and administrative costs to come out of the bid, the bid budget?
No. That was part of the ordinance that was put together a couple of years ago. And in that ordinance, not only the hoteliers insisted on this, but if I remember correctly, the mayor and city council suggested that that not be used for administration, that we use that money for marketing only. And that was a pretty strong feeling of the hoteliers especially.
I know that you've hired several, I believe you've hired several new employees, but that's something that was planned in the existing city portion of the budget. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. That'd be everything, Sam. Okay. Ms. Martenson, please.
Hi. I'm having to explore generating revenue by our web presence, a website that people can click and click an ad or something like that. Is that something that you currently do now, or what are you planning to do in the future?
We do an awful lot of that. In fact, if any of you recall, we send a quarterly report to each of you, and I believe you just received one about a month ago. And in that quarterly report, it not only tells you what we do almost on a daily basis and a weekly basis and a monthly basis, but at the end of that report now, we are including our marketing report, which is about five pages long. And so that marketing report will show you what we're doing in not only print marketing and advertising, but TV and radio. A huge part of our budget anymore goes to the web advertising, web marketing. A lot of our budget actually also goes to the Digital Strategies Group, of which we're a partner. We have found that with this increase of marketing money that we have from the bid dollars, that we've been able to do so much more cooperative advertising and matching funds from, say, the Department of Tourism, that we are doing ten times the marketing that we've ever been able to do, because we have that money available to match other departments' budgets. We're doing a lot of it, and if you have that quarterly report, and you'll receive another one, of course, in another month or two, but you'll see everything that we're doing, and it's almost overwhelming.
Ms. Martenson, do you have a follow-up? Okay. Any other questions, Counsel? Any other questions? Lloyd LaCroy?
Michelle, how much did get left out of your budget for this year?
Nineteen thousand.
Any follow-ups, Mr. LaCroy? Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Counsel, for the CVB? Thank you, Dan and Michelle, for coming tonight and everybody representing. Dan, would you like to speak?
Just a couple of real quick things, just really to reiterate what Michelle had talked about, just so important to keep in mind that the CVB is an income-generating entity for the city. There is a monster out there. Some of the other communities, other states, have certainly felt this downswing in the visitor industry. Rapid City is so fortunate, I think, to have this wonderful staff working for them. Our economy is just the opposite in the visitor industry. Most of the numbers in this area are up, and certainly a positive from these dollars that have been spent. So I'd really like to keep that in mind. There's so many things happening right now. The dollar's starting to climb a little bit, but we've certainly seen it fall and an increase in foreign, in foreign visitors and spending. And it's this entity that takes care of that. It's the entity that represents that and goes after those dollars and brings them in. When you look at residual spending, it's not only the approximately one hundred and eighty million in visitor spending, but if that dollar does, in fact, turn over even a minimum of seven times, you're really talking about a tremendous number of tax dollars that are being added into, into the Rapid City economy. And those are, again, all dollars that were brought in, you know, hopefully, are a large part because of the efforts of the CVB, the efforts of starting back with Dan Warren and Mayor Hanks and Dave Davis to, and the whole staff of the CVB to get that bid in place. This is a plan that has been in work, in the works for a long time, certainly is really producing now. And to take a step backward, in my opinion, would be really a big, a big mistake. We need to just keep moving this momentum forward. There are so many positive projects going in the Rapid City area right now, and it's just so important to keep that, that moving forward. And I think tonight's a big part of that, and certainly the work that CVB does is a big part of that.
Did you have anything else, Dan? We do have a question from Ron Wyffenbach, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. It's more of a clarification for, in my understanding, is the revenue to the CVB is divided into two groups? Can you, like, give me a summary?
The BBB tax, which is the bed, booze, and board tax, is actually split. Twenty-five percent goes to the CVB, seventy-five percent goes to the Civic Center.
Can you, the bed, booze, and I keep getting this confused, I don't know why, for some reason, but how's that tax generated?
That is actually through hotels, restaurants, and drinks, and liquor.
Is that an extra percentage, or?
Yes, one, that's the one percent.
Okay, and then you guys are paid a...
We get twenty-five percent of that one percent, yes.
So if those numbers increase, you get an increase?
Correct.
And then the other funding source is?
The other funding source is the bid, is Business Improvement District. And that is, we went to each of the hoteliers. There are, it's actually all of the hotels in Rapid City that have fifty rooms and more. And they are collecting two dollars per occupied room per night. It's their bottom line. They are not charged any taxes on this. It's just a collection process. That money then comes to the city, and the city is the administrator for that. And that then, the city takes one percent of that for a fee, and then the rest of that comes to the CVB each month.
Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Wyffenbach?
No, I'm getting this right now, and I appreciate it.
And those are marketing dollars.
Right, and those are the marketing dollars. So if the hotel rooms increase in usage, that number also increases. So it's a direct correlation between, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any other questions, Counsel, for the CVB? Okay. Thanks, Michelle and Dan, for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your support.
Number four would be the Doll. Hi, Ms. Linda. If you guys would state your name, ladies.
My name is Linda Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of the Rapid City Arts Council.
Barb Evansen, Community Services Director of the Rapid City Arts Council.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, Ms. Karen. Go ahead, Ms. Karen.
First of all, I want to thank the Counsel for all of the support that the Doll Art Center gets and the Rapid City Arts Council as well. When we talk about wonderful new things that are happening in Rapid City, the transformation of the Doll is certainly one of those. And I appreciate the time of Counsel and Mayor, people who've been able to come down and tour the new facility, because we're looking at great things for 2009. The Doll has been the community art center for thirty-four years. the community art center for 34 years, and as we enter the 35th year, for the first time, we really have an opportunity to partner significantly with other entities in downtown to do some amazing things for Rapid City. We look forward to partnering with the CBB, the Chamber, Destination Development, and I can't think of a better time for the Doll to be coming online than right now in downtown Rapid City. It's very exciting. I have a few points that I'd like to bring up, and then I will open for questions. First of all, just that the council should be informed of, I'm referring to point one on, on your sheet, of the potential for additional costs for utilities, maintenance, and janitorial in our 2009 budget. We did our best estimate to, to try to project what those costs would be, and we put those into our budget request. Now, the mayor has calculated that differently for his recommendations, and we had a, a good meeting where he talked about how he came to those calculations. But I would like the council to be aware that we believe that they'll be higher and closer to what we've projected. Number two, the capital outlay request is to help purchase a card key access security system, and that second out, the second handout that we gave you speaks to that. There are some things that we're really good at fundraising for, and there are other things that are not as sexy to fundraise for, and security card key access seems to be one of them. The total cost for that system is $45,000, and we believe that we can raise the additional funds, but we're asking for $20,000 from the council to be able to purchase that software and that system. And Barb Evanson is here to speak directly to that, if you have questions about that. And then number three is just a short reminder of the Doll versus the Rapid City Arts Council funding mechanisms. It's important to remember that the Rapid City Arts Council is the nonprofit that has the city management contract. So we work on behalf of the city to manage the Doll. The Doll Art Center itself is a public building. It's owned by the city of Rapid City, and so it has all the utilities, maintenance costs of any other public building. And this handout gives you a breakdown of the building funding versus the Rapid City Arts Council funding. So you can see in 2008, it was about 183,000 for operating from the city, and then all the capital funds, of course, that we've brought to the table in this, this expansion. So it breaks down contributed earned income for the city side. And then on the Rapid City Arts Council funding side, which are, which are our mission programs, our arts programs, I've broken down where we get contributed income, where we get earned income, and also special events. Those are two separate budgets. Again, one is for the public building, and one is for the nonprofit that raises money for the arts programs that happen in Rapid City. And with that, I will open up for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Sam, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Linda, how, how much additional is your organization requesting above and beyond what has been allocated in the '09 budget?
Uh, I believe, I don't have a copy of the city budget, but I believe the mayor's recommendation was 197,000? Hundred and, 176,000. Our estimates are 245,000, and that's including that capital outlay.
So that'd be additional this year?
Yes.
You want another 176?
Mm-hmm. We had, let's see, I don't, do you have the narrative pages that we submitted with our budget? I would know how to refer.
Pauline, if we could have a clarification of what they're getting now and what they are asking for additional, please?
Our, our 2008 budget, by my records, was 183,792.
Give me just a minute, Ms. Linda, so we can find that question, in case Sam has a follow up, Ms. Linda.
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Ms. Pauline, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The 2008 approved budget was 183,792, which Linda just said. We show the 2009 as 177,613, and that would be the mayor's approved or recommended budget. When I did the comparison that you guys requested, looking at the original budget request versus what was in the mayor's proposal, we only showed a difference of $20,000, which was supposed to be for scheduling software, according to the notes that we had, so.
So if I'm correct, there's 20,000 that they want additional from the 177,613?
Actually, um, when, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. When we met with the mayor, we had understood that we were getting 197,684. That was what was presented at that meeting. And that was the increase. We had figured our increases according to the mayor's instructions. But what we asked for was 246,575.
246,575, Ms. Linda?
Yes. So we were asking for a 34% increase. The majority of those increases are in utilities, maintenance, and janitorial for the building.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Linda. Do you have a follow up, Sam?
I do. I guess I would just like clarification that, I'm, what I'm hearing is, is that the budgeted amount for '09, the recommended budget amount was 177, according to our books. And it's your understanding, Linda, that it was to be 197,684? Is it the-
Yes.
Is it the $20,000 scheduling package that makes a difference there, or is it-
Actually, yes, now that I look at that. That's correct. That would include the capital outlay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Ms. Linda, for answering that. Ron Wyffenbach?
When we were allocated the funds for the, the new building, make a, a larger building at the Doll, did we not anticipate that we would have an increase in these costs, or, I guess what was our plan?
We, we've pretty much been consistent about what we presented the increases would be.
So we knew that we would have roughly a 34% increase in the costs, and so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ron. Bill O'Kreppke, please.
Thank you. Follow up on Alderman Wyffenbach's question. When you first proposed this, the Doll going into expansion, what was your, you were originally getting 125 a year, 120, 125,000 a year before the expansion? Was that somewhere around there?
Probably.
Plus or minus a few.
Yeah.
And then when you came forward and, and we got, we gave you the money to, to do the expansion, didn't you say that it was gonna be like two and a quarter? That number sticks with me.
Yes.
So when, when, to follow up on your question, Ron.
Thank you.
When we, when we, when we went through the process to, to approve the Doll, the monies for the Doll, we anticipated an additional, we anticipated the, the subsidy to the Doll at two and a quarter. This was back a couple of years ago, or whenever it was.
Yes.
So now that's done, we're coming back at our-
So I, I, that's, that's kind of what I remembered, and so, just to kind of follow up for your question.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Ms. Karen, do you have a question?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Of all the organizations that came forward under 2012 with some kind of expansion proposal, I think, in all fairness to the Rapid City Arts Council, and as the manager of the Doll Center, they had the most carefully calculated sense of what the additional costs would be as the project moved forward. And so I think they've always presented the number that Bill is describing, and that's a, that's not an always, that's not an easy thing necessarily. I think of, as we've observed other expansion projects and other costs, other organizations that have come forward, that's a hard thing often to get your arms around. But nevertheless, I thought that, that the Rapid City Arts Council had done a very good job of trying to project what those additional costs would be, and Bill is right about that.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. If I could ask a question. We budgeted 177,613, and the increase that we're needing is 66,575, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Council, any other questions for the Doll? Lloyd LaCroy?
I'll just make, make a simple comment. I, I toured the Doll and, and I was under the understanding we were just looking for 20,000 for the, the software, management software, but now it seems we're even shorter than that.
Yeah, well, it seems like we've, at the first budget presentation, we talked about the utilities and maintenance shortage, as well as the, the software. So, yeah, it's more.
I'll ask a more direct question. How much are you asking for? You need 20 for the software, and the additional that you're looking for is?
What I have on, on my narrative is 62,783.
Okay. And, and I do, I did want to make one comment. In the tour, I think, I think you're operating maintenance. I think, I think eventually, once the Doll gets up and running, I think you'll be able to work things out. I, I do foresee that from the way you guys got it set up, and, and with your management skills. But I do think it's gonna take a little bit of time. But that's what I was looking for at the final number. Thanks, guys.
Um, Linda, I, I guess I read the numbers to you, and I thought it was 66,575, because it was 177, 177,613 is what we had budgeted. You needed 20,000 for software, and then with the 34% increase, which put it up to 246, 2,046,575, that makes it 66,575.
Right. Madam Chair, I apologize, because I'm looking at, at my narrative that had a different number, so yours is correct.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Ms. Linda. Did we have any other questions, council? Ron Wyffenbach, did you have a question?
Yeah, I got a question, and I'm trying to understand this as we go through.
Thank you, sir.
Last year, in 2008, the budget was 183,792. Is this correct?
Um, Ms. Linda?
Yes, it is.
And then this year, it's for 177?
177,613 is what they have budgeted. They want 20,000 for software.
No, I understand that. I just, and the building's completed, right?
95% complete.
Okay, thank you.
So the total amount they would need was 246,575, sir. Thank you. Any other questions for the Doll, council? Alrighty. Thank you, Ms. Linda.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you ladies coming tonight. Next would be Destination Rapid City. Destination Rapid City is actually in the mayor's budget, council, for 100,000, so you knew that ahead of time. This was not an unfunded list. This was actually in the mayor's budget. So, thank you for coming, and if you'd state your names, please.
My name is John Brewer. I'm with Destination Rapid City.
And my name is Kitty Kinsman. I'm chairman of the board of the Rapid City Chamber, and also hold a seat on the Destination Rapid City Board.
Welcome.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I know you have a thousand decisions to make. I previously, last week either, had the chance to meet with some of you, and those that were on your motorcycles, I left a packet for you in your board box with the city. So hopefully you've had a chance to review that. And I'd like to review just briefly how we came here tonight as a part of the Rapid City budget, and a part of Rapid City, and then tell you a little bit about the $100,000 request that we have. The Downtown Rapid City Economic Development Corporation Incorporated, July 14th, last Friday was kind of a big day for us. We finally got a phone system in the office. We're, we're organizing. Our mission is to foster the revitalization of downtown, and that revitalization is, if you will, the result of two major undertakings in this community over the last two years. The first one was the City Center Revitalization Task Force, which a number of the council people served on, participated in. It was chaired by Councilman, Councilwoman Olson, Councilman O'Krepke actually chaired the parking committee portion of that, Deb Hadcock, Malcolm, you were on that county, weren't you, and Ron, I think you were on that at the meetings. So you understand that that was, for the first year, a full community discussion of what we'd like to see in downtown, and what revitalization might be all about. Subsequently, Chairman Olson, Chairwoman Olson brought together a facilitation group, and out of that facilitation, three areas to pursue were drawn out. One was parking, which brought forth what is now known as the Annie Shaffey Rushmont Project. A number of people in town presented programs that might leverage the 2012 money for parking into something more for our community. Of those three projects that were examined by the task force, the recommendation to the council was the Rushmont Project. Secondly, branding of our community, finding our own identity. Michelle mentioned it earlier, that she is finding out in her industry that communities have to be more involved with their destination marketing, and that was one of the things that we identified about the time that Roger Brooks identified Rapid City as someplace that has a great future. And the third thing in there was to provide an economic development entity downtown, the glue that puts all of this together, oversees the economic development downtown. The branding portion of it became part of the city, the CBB, I guess the hotel bid when they hired Roger Brooks, Destination Development, and that has become now a roadmap embraced by a number of partners in the city, the Chamber, CBB, city, and a group of Rapid City property owners downtown, and business owners downtown. So that's how we got here, and how we incorporated as an economic development entity representing downtown, and partnering with people like the Chamber, the CBB, and the city of Rapid City, and the Rapid City Downtown Association. I guess our mission statement creates, the, the mission of us creating a destination brand for Rapid City. Many of you have already heard this, but if you say Deadwood, you know what Deadwood means. If you say Sturgis, and you were here last week, then you know what Sturgis means. We lack an identity to be the hub, the grand central station of the Black Hills. Here we sit in the middle of 5 million visitors a year, and they're eating out of town. They're shopping out of town. And our business environment, both in the way of hard assets and soft assets, can be improved. Our job is to make the streets and sidewalks pedestrian friendly. It's the number one thing in making downtowns revitalized, creating opportunities for business and property owners to improve their profits. And we have a number of programs that were outlined in the Brooks Report. We improve our downtown infrastructure, and we're an advocate, as well as an agent of change for that. And everyone knows us as building iconic plazas, plazas and bridges. We haven't built either yet, but I'll tell you a little bit about that. The economic development that downtown economic development-like destination deal with is new business attraction, increased jobs, increased property values, increased sales tax revenues. So this isn't soft money you're putting in. Like the other groups that have been here on economic development for you, that is our job. That's our work. That's what we will bring to Rapid City. And the Rapid City citizens are hungry for this to occur. Not only is it a, an item that the press has covered extensively, the people in the city are excited for it. We have a little bit of evidence of that. They will support and come downtown and look for revitalization downtown. Summer Nights on Seventh, a recurring event that was put together by the Chamber's Leadership Rapid City Group as a project, has demonstrated exactly the sizzle that downtown organizations sell to support the stake, the economic development. When the municipal league conference, and Malcolm brought here, I had the chance to meet with them at a reception one night. I visited with at least 10 of the different cities, people that were in here. All of them had something going on in the way of revitalization, in the way of downtown economic development. A private foundation has contacted Destination, requested that we apply, forcing us to take their money to help Rapid City build a pedestrian bridge across Omaha. And that we see as- And that we see as quite a mandate for us to proceed with that advocacy. Over a million dollars has been, I'm sorry, over $100,000 has been pledged or paid for for Destination programs already. Money that's been collected and pledged for our programs. And over $1 million has been pledged and 50,000 is already in the bank for an iconic plaza that hasn't been designed, hasn't been located, and we haven't even gone to work on yet. But there is a lot of interest in that from people that understand we're going to have to raise that money in the community and put that as a cultural heritage gift to this city. We're asking for $100,000 support from Rapid City. This is consistent with models from economic development downtown and other cities. Actually, it's a bit of a bargain compared to some of our closer neighbors and we promise to you that we'll leverage every dollar on that, on program and the revitalization of downtown. We'll deliver on the vision in the Brooks Report, which I hope to share with all of you. We'll set appropriate goals. We'll report to you regularly and we'll be successful. The investment that you make here tonight in Destination Rapid City is not just economic. The programs in downtown will build in this community and its citizens a sense of place and a sense of pride and it'll be a cultural heritage that we'll leave to the generation ahead. Kitty's here with me if she wants to.
Thank you, John. Kitty?
What more can I say? I'm here on behalf, really, of the Chamber Board of Directors, who I think has been a catalyst for much of this and these ideas along with the city for a number of years and John's already alluded to the revitalization task force. The Chamber, as many of you know and Karen specifically knows, took an active interest in this a few years ago, even under Chairman Wiss, and I extended that during my term as chairman, to really figure out what Rapid City could do to create a destination out of its downtown. And last year in that spirit, we went to Boise and everyone I know has heard the Boise story, but it really was a catalyst for many of the ideas that are now being implemented here. And it's not that these ideas weren't germinating already, but we found a voice and a picture of what things could be in Boise that energized a tremendous amount of people in this community and organizations in this community. And I am, one, very proud tonight to be here with John and Destination Rapid City, asking the city to partner in this new economic development initiative because it truly has the potential to transform the look and feel of our community in a way that I think all of us will be proud. The Chamber has always seen itself as a catalyst for ideas and I think this is no different. If you look at some of the ideas that we looked at in Boise, we looked at an entity called the Capital Development Corporation. We're here tonight proposing essentially a similar type of a structure called Destination Rapid City. We looked at event ideas, like I think their event was Alive After Five. Rapid City, in less than a year, our leadership class of Rapid City has implemented Summers on 7th, Summer on 7th, and taken what nobody thought could be done and what had been talked about and tried but never completed successfully, they've proven it can be done and now they've got the businesses, the artists energized, knowing that they can bring people downtown. And we've got that along with the Dole opening. We have so many positive things going on in the community and many of those we saw implemented and we know that we can do them in Rapid City. Destination Rapid City is our vehicle. It's our implementation engine. None of us, the Chamber, Economic Development, the Dole, or the city can take the focus off of all the other things that we do. We need an implementation engine and Destination Rapid City, in partnership with United Downtown Association, with the Chamber, the CVB and the city, is our entity to make that happen. And so I'm proud to be here tonight on behalf of the Chamber and Destination Rapid City, asking for your support. I truly think this is an investment. The Chamber's invested, as in this, in economic development, in our CVB. This is one more strategic investment that I think you're going to see leveraged in a way that we can't even fathom. So thank you, hopefully, for your support and frankly, for the support of the many organizations that I know you had questions here tonight. The Chamber's a partner in many of them and we support the mayor and the council and your leadership in making this community an even prouder place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kitty. We have questions from the council. If I could counsel, I have a few questions. Number one, your specific goal for the 100,000 was what, John, again, if we could?
The Destination budget that is put together, we're fiscal year, so June 30, 2009 is our fiscal year end, so we're already in it. The budget is made up or designed to do two things, three things actually, for funding. One is membership. We certainly, right now, plan at the end of two years to have membership revenues at 130 to 150% of this $100,000 you're putting in. But it's going to take us two years to build some membership and so those kind of numbers are in. And we'll be prorating already into this year. So that's one of the things. We do propose that a business improvement district will be used. That's how we really partner with the city and we'll be back before you with that, just as the hotel people were, to show you how that can be helpful. And we would expect that to provide funds for the programs that downtown works, that's streetscapes and facades and technical assistance programs that we've put forward. It's the marketing of downtown. A strategic partner that we have in it is the Rapid City Downtown Association that's responsible for managing that street activity, that is business promotion, and we're going to be supporting them. So those are the primary fundings. There's sponsorships and there's grants and there's other things that we'll use in the development of infrastructure throughout the year. One thing you should know, that none of the money that you put into this, frankly, not any of the money that will come from two other sources, will be used to pay the executive director.
So you do have matching funds and how much do you have in your fund for Destination right now, by chance, John?
What do we have right now?
Yes.
We have about $64,000, I think, then.
Okay.
And remember, we just got our phone Friday. We haven't even printed stationery yet, so we're on the startup. And that's one of the things about the city money that's definitely important in the partnership. The first year or two, we're really going to need that. Even if we come back and we're successful with the business improvement district in this year, those funds won't begin to flow to us until next year. Building membership will take time as well.
And do you have matching funds for the 100,000? There wasn't any matching for the 100? I had heard that you guys had matching funds for the 100,000 that we were giving. No?
We have already had private donations of $100,000. That may have been, what was that, correct?
And the average amount that most cities give to downtowns are?
I don't have an average. I do know that Sioux Falls has given $159,000 for the last, they told me six years, but I just got a message from their executive director over there and he now says that's been for 10 years and they've kind of more, the last six years, they've been a Main Street organization. And they also use business improvement financing and membership. We've met with those people and we would expect our structure to look very much the same.
Thank you. And now the hard question. If you guys are into economic development and that's going to be your entity for downtown, what would be the difference of us giving Economic Development or Destination Rapid City if they're both going to be for economic development? What's going to make the difference for, I guess, me personally to give it to you instead of Economic Development? Because you'll be doing supposedly what they'll be doing downtown? Or is there a difference?
There is quite a difference. Economic development in the downtown areas are measured in an entirely different way. They're measured in the business activity and business environment that attracts people into the downtown, which is both our local citizens, which we have to do first. Our mission is to make sure that the local people will come downtown. We don't have any problem with finding 4,500, or 4,500,000 extra people to come downtown. They're within miles of Rapid City every year, but they won't hang out down here and spend their money if the local citizens won't. And that's a job completely different from what Economic Development Partnership does with the attraction of business and jobs and whatever. So we measure it maybe some of the same ways, but the work is entirely different. It's an on-the-streets job a lot.
Thank you. I appreciate that answer. Counsel, sorry for that. Just had a few questions. Malcolm Chapman, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a point of clarification. I've heard it said a couple of times that Leadership Rapid City was responsible for Summer Nights on 7th. Just a point of clarification, Leadership Rapid City class of 2007, which the city had five members in that class, so I just want them to get their kudos and their pat on the back. Just a question. John, you mentioned that it could take a couple of years to get this jump started and off the ground in terms of membership and all. Do you foresee then coming back to the city, like in Sioux Falls, for five, six, seven years to be a line item in the city's budget to do this? Or is this a one-time shot in the arm? Or how do you envision that working out in terms of funding and that relationship with the city?
I may not have mentioned earlier, but the sitting mayor has a seat on our board representing the city in partnership. One of the reasons for that, the city owns a lot of land downtown. They have a lot of the land downtown. A lot of what we will have to do will be with and in cooperation and with the city. Much of the work that we do will involve enhancing what the city already has. The Parks Department has a huge part of their budget downtown, just taking care of nodes and trees and Christmas lights and those are the kinds of things that are downtown. I envision that the city as a partner will be a line item for a while. I wouldn't say that, I anticipate that they are going to be, to the extent they are now, badly needed the first year, probably the first two years, in the future. I would see that the councils in the future would look at this and say, this is the best dollar we can spend. We'll be a partner.
Malcolm Chapman?
Thank you, John. You know, I fully agree with the concept and I think that in a larger picture, this group probably needs more of an influx of money. And I would hope that in those opportunities where the city has larger pots of money, that you would put yourself in line to apply for one of those larger pots of money. I hope that you do that.
Thank you, Councilman Chapman. Actually, at this point, it would be, our board has a great, strong interest and Kitty's on our board, she can tell you. It's more about what we leave behind in this community, building this, than it is the hard economics of what we have to do every day. And that's my job, to go get this thing started and bring that economic development to Rapid City downtown every day. But there's a sense of what we leave to the generation ahead and I think that your money's going to be well spent. I hope you have larger pots in the future. Don't misunderstand me, but we will leverage every dollar you give us. We'll make it work. We'll tell you, we'll set appropriate goals and we'll report back to you.
Thank you, John. Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of questions for you, John. You discussed earlier a business improvement district for downtown and as your organization, are you willing to commit that if the city gives you, gives your organization $100,000 out of the general fund now and you're successful in implementing the business improvement district, that the city could reutilize the $100,000 for other important general fund priorities? I mean, is the goal is for this to be stopgap funding until you find additional funding sources?
Historically in other communities that, and by the way, let me mention that the city is the single largest partner with downtown economic development across the nation. It is very standard to have, there are other ways besides the general budget line item that the city can participate financially and be my responsibility to identify those and meet with the city and if those would be ways that you wanted to participate as a partner in this, to bring that to you. What we're here tonight, and I can clearly say, is that $100,000 a year is really the startup capital that's incredibly important to us. The business improvement district is the number one tool used to put those items under whatever's allowed by state law into place for programs in the community, determined by the community, the people that are in that district. So both of them are out there. I'm not prepared to commit tonight that if we have a bid, that the city's line item would go away, but it's certainly, I can commit that if the council puts the bid in place when we bring that forward, that we certainly won't be asking for increases in that partnership. The bid is paid for by the people in the district. It's a real bootstrap. The city is not investing by the people paying taxes in the bid, Sam. So I would say that we'll be around together, hopefully as partners, financially sharing for the foreseeable future.
Do you have a follow-up, Madam Chair?
I guess in follow-up to that, John, you know, I'm sure you recognize the situation that the council is in in terms of, you know, we're looking for, at least I am anyway, looking for $75,000 for Black Hills Vision and 50 or 75,000 for Economic Development Partnership, thinking about the Dole's request for $66,000. And there's a lot of funding requests that are coming up and the city continues to experience pressure year after year in the general fund budget. And so that was the reason that I asked you that question straight up is, is my hope and my intent, I know that I'm one of 10, my hope and my intent is that the city proceeds with this funding, that your organization will be looking at this as a stopgap rather than a permanent and continued expenditure of $100,000 every year from the city's general fund. And that is my, you know, that is my hope. The other, I have two remaining questions. One is, how many staff do you have? And right along with that is your budget for salaries? And I have one remaining question after that.
I am the staff right now. Before the end of the year, the board has allowed and we have, we are going to provide with our partner, the Rapid City Downtown Association, a development director, marketing person, they'll manage the program for membership development, both for Rapid City Downtown Association as well as DRC. So to that extent, we'll have that individual. And that position is probably about a $45,000 a year position. After the first of the year, two hours a day, four days a week, I get an administrative assistant till then and after then, probably, I'll be doing my own work. So for the next year, there is that person that we will hire as a development director in that salary range. We'll have a part-time administrative person. And as I said, my salary's being taken care of by a private donation, so there'll be no expense for, to the city and Destination for my salary for 2009 fiscal year. And there's a commitment to go beyond that in the future. And if I could, Sam, I'd like to respond to your comment on the other. I don't want to come back every year and ask the city for more money and see our organization as, seeing that as a line item. I want to come back to the city, with the city, and see that that's something they want to participate in. And if that's not the way they want to do it, I understand you've got thousands more decisions to make about how you spend taxpayers' money tonight than our organization. We like to think we're going to leverage that up for you and we'd like to think, well, we don't think, we will. We'll go out and find other sources of money that will diminish the city's role and maybe we can find other ways of doing it that aren't hard dollars out of the general budget.
Do you have another follow-up?
One last question. John, we recently received a letter from your organization offering, I believe- John, we recently received a letter from your organization offering, I believe it was $22,000 for assistance with an additional trolley for the city.
You did not receive that from Destination, you received that from me, a discussion with the mayor and with Rich Thagan, that a trolley added to, since Federal Highway will pay 83 percent, 17 percent came to $23,000, would mean that our trolleys, which seem to be very popular, I think it's one of the great programs that the city's put in, they're full. And in my office, I look down, they're going by and they're full, but they run every 70 minutes at the stop. And it means that at Storybrooke Island, if you've got four kids and you're from Alliance or someplace in New Jersey, you might not get off at every stop. With another trolley, we can run those with 35-minute stops, seemed like it was a good idea, talked to a couple of people, raised some money, and took it down there. That is not a gift from Destination. Those funds did not go through Destination. I just happened to be the one that wanted to do something good for the city, and that's how it got there.
Thank you, Sam. Next is Karen Olson, please.
Thanks, John, it's been very exciting to watch this process move forward. It's living proof that a good idea has a life of its own, and there's a lot of folks that have stepped forward, and I'm really delighted at that activity. One of the parts of this discussion that's always been foremost and has been recommended and talked about by the experts who came to our community, Roger Brooks included, which is the realization that the real meat and potatoes of this kind of programming really happens in the private side. And it seems to me that the bid will probably provide some of that kind of funding that moves this Destination Rapid City forward, and you can comment on that. In addition to that, do you have any sense of the kind of property value increases and the tax revenue, sales tax revenues that you see as this activity for City, Rapid City, Destination Rapid City moves forward?
Thank you, good questions. Hope I have a good answer for you. There is no model right now that I can give you for the sales tax. And the reason is, I need a relative to step up and give us a new sales tax report for Rapid City so that we can measure that. We're working on that. And once again, Kitty is at the fore and going to give us some help with that. What I would refer you to is, and I hope to get to each councilperson a full report, the Roger Brooks report. You should know that he's done over 200 cities in the United States and Canada. And some of those, they do, they're able to look back and provide the actual instances of the economic development that's occurred under this process. Property values, lease rates, visitation rates, I mean, local and out. And some of them are just stunning. Jackson Hole, the Brickyard in Oklahoma City. Someone that did not use a consultant, somebody that has a homegrown program is Billings, Montana. And those of you that have traveled in Billings 10 years ago may recall, it was a bit testy to be downtown, sometimes at high noon. They have, they have just a huge array of restaurants, entertainment, dining, and what they told me when I was over there for the downtown conference two months ago, they have no tourist season, they have no government. They went and bought a building downtown and asked the state university, Montana State University, to come down there and have a presence in their downtown. They're doing those things that you have to do to maximize all those. And so, we would expect to use many of those examples in the Brooks report. He offers himself as a continuing consultant. That'll be, I guess, up to the partners and Destination to determine whether we need to go forward with him. But he's certainly given us a huge roadmap, and Destination's board, by the way, adopted that report as the roadmap to do those things. We would hope to be reporting those metrics that tell you that we're doing our job, and that means people are spending their money, property values are going up, and that the people in the district are getting their money's worth. If we're going to assess an additional tax that way, it should be fair, and it should be, they should be getting their money's worth.
Karen, did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I do, just to make an observation. This isn't really, whatever dollars are involved with this, the $100,000 that you're proposing, shouldn't be overlooked, that there are a lot of things that the cities are currently doing. I mean, even the small things, for example, the number of picnic tables that we move downtown, that the Parks Department moves downtown. A recent proposal for some safety issues in buildings downtown, that the city is, it's a revolving fund that is moving forward. And so, when we talk about $100,000 of economic development, plus even the other institutions we're talking about funding this evening, we shouldn't overlook the fact of the things that the city already does. Now, you mentioned some of those, which is holiday lights and a variety of things. And sometimes that, those total numbers of services that really benefit the business community are not talked about because they are not aggregated into a single sum.
Ms. Karen, I hate to stop you, but do you have a specific question?
No.
Ms. Karen?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Ron Wyffenbach, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate Karen's comments, because we were getting to the point where we, I just want, I was going to make one comment, and number one, I'm excited about the opportunity for the stakeholders of downtown Rapid City to come up to the plate and say, you know, we're going to take this under control and make some of these things happen, some of these things that can't happen in our city. But I wanted to also allude into Karen's, and I think it can't go unsaid here for the people that are listening, to understand that Rapid City is a stakeholder in downtown. They just provided the other day $600,000 or $700,000 for a parking ramp, third level. There's allocated another $2.8 million for a parking ramp downtown. And I just wanted to add those comments because it seemed like we were, and I understand Destination Rapid City's point of view, and where they're coming from, and the opportunity of the real stakeholders, the real decision-makers down there getting together saying, "We're going to do this." The opportunity for the business districts for downtown is exciting. I think in my conversation with John the other day, we talked about the real purpose of tax incremental financing districts. That's what they were developed for in the first place, it's an opportunity, time to use it for what they were really meant to be used for. So, I'm assuming in the future we'll be looking at some of those.
Thank you, Ron. Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I keep hearing a bid district, and I guess I'm just not understanding, because I've gone through that process with the CBB over the last several years. So, we make, at least what I heard is, if the city does something with this bid, then this would happen. Is this not a state statute? What kind of bid are we talking about?
The Business Improvement District is approved under the state statute. And our job is to, our job is, at Destination will be to put together the boundary, an assessment method, make sure that the uses are well-defined of the funds that come through that, as per the code or as per the city's needs, they overlap. And then we come to the council, which needs to read a resolution twice, it's like passing an ordinance. You'll have a public hearing on it, and then you'll read the resolution twice, I think that's right, the mayor's gone through it.
It's an ordinance, usually read twice.
Right, right. And then, it's collected, it's collected along, and I wish I had more specific information, we're working on it, we have a board meeting next Tuesday. Our board will approve the specifics that have to be approved under the code, I'll design that to you. Matter of fact, all of you will have a chance to visit with me as we provide it. And then, you know, we'll go out into the district, and we're going to talk to everybody.
Thank you, John. Malcolm, do you have a follow-up on it? Lloyd Decroy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, I kind of struggle with this because it, you know, I've heard about Destination Rapid City probably a couple of months ago. It's probably the first time I've heard about it, and I've gotten your packet, and, you know, I appreciate that. And I see that you were just formed the nonprofit, 501(c) July 14th. I'm just kind of curious, how did Destination Rapid City first initiate? I mean, did someone approach you and say, "John, I'm going to hire you, you do get this going"? Because that's what it sounds like to me, and if that's the case, you know, you're very intelligent, you create work, I know that. But I'm just kind of curious how this got together, because when we had, you know, I first got on the council, we got the Downtown Association, they've been together for years, and I think they talked about the bid, doing a bid at one time before. If I'm right, I could be wrong, but I'm just kind of curious to how this all formed. I'm not sure it all come from Roger Brooks. I mean, because Roger Brooks, we had Roger Brooks, and we had the Revitalization Task Force, did it come from that too? Is it, because I heard talk about the districts and so forth. So, just kind of fill me on how this got started and bypassed the Downtown Association.
Councilman, thanks, guys. If you could just put that kind of in a nutshell, we, almost about a half hour.
Absolutely. Councilman Decroy.
Thank you.
Lots of these ideas have floated around. I think really where things started to gel was in the Chambers Strategic Planning Trip to Boise. We met extensively with members of the CCDC, Capital Area Development Corporation, in Boise about how they structured their work, because they had been enormously successful in working with parking issues and in restructuring the downtown and bringing property owners and business owners together, two different animals. And one of the things we learned there was how important it was to really have the private sector and specifically property owners who have the ability to change the mix and the look of downtown in partnership with the city and with the downtown businesses, how important it was for that emphasis and leadership to come from that base. We brought those ideas back, and within months, months of that happening, Roger Brooks was back here, and a group of property owners met to talk about this idea and essentially decided they wanted to form. John was at that meeting, and I'll hand that off now.
That was on March 7th. And so, on March 7th, my job, if you want to call it that, was to consult to those property owners and determine whether I should be here tonight, whether we should go forward with this in the community. And so, as we developed the concept of what economic development for downtown might be, stayed in touch with those property owners. Ultimately, unanimously, that group stayed together, they met three times, and they said, "Form the corporation and go." So, that's how we got here, Lloyd.
Do you have a follow-up, Lloyd?
No.
Thank you, Lloyd, for your question. We have Bill Okrepki, please.
Thank you. I'm taking a class in, a PhD class in strategic planning. And during the last meeting, the last leadership training we had here with League of Cities just a few months ago, we had a speaker that talked about strategic planning and how to go about doing this in the right way, and, you know, some of the smart minds are sharing with me, if you will, and some of these other, some of the other councils, but they're doing exactly, and John's doing exactly what they're telling. He's got the stakeholders, he's got the strategic planning process going, and we are, we have an opportunity here to really support what we need to do for the downtown revitalization. And all the pieces are in place. Now, Karen, you know, we did the, many of us did this, the Downtown Revitalization Task Force, and that was fairly in the wrong hands, not because of personalities, it was because it was the government entity. And now, it's finally into the right place. If we would have had the parking with John six months ago, it would have been probably solved and fixed, and everybody would have been happy by now.
Bill, I hate to stop you, but do you have a specific question, please?
Go ahead, Deb.
Do you have a question that you wanted to ask him? We'll still have more time to talk about if, where we want to direct the money and stuff to the different businesses, but if we could keep it to the specific questions, that would work for us if we could. Any other questions, council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty, and John. Six would be economic development, and I'm sorry that we kind of ran over in time, but we didn't let Destination talk before, and a lot of the council members wanted a little bit more time on that if we could. So, I appreciate everybody's patience tonight on letting us talk a little bit more on Destination. Hopefully, we can keep on track. Thanks for coming, guys, if you'd state your names.
Pat Tullustis, chairman this year, Economic Development.
And I'm Dave Hillard, and I'm the vice-chairman of Economic Development Partnership.
Thanks, guys, for coming.
And we will promise to try to keep this short, see if we can pick up the pace just a little bit. We'd sent out some information and had an opportunity to visit with a lot of the council people this last week, so we won't rehash all of that. I do want to say that, you know, no one is more supportive, I don't think, of Black Hills Vision and the regional focus or the view they've got, the things that we all know are important, nor the downtown group and their focused approach to that part of town. I think the important thing to remember, and that's the reoccurring thing I heard this last week, is what does economic development, as we think of it, really do? And you've got to remember that our primary job is to recruit jobs to Rapid City, primary jobs. And I know there have been times when people have been frustrated because they don't feel the numbers are high enough, but you've also got to remember that we're transitioning economic development, like a lot of things, we're transitioning into a little different mode where we're searching out not just jobs, but high-paying jobs and stable jobs. You know, we could recruit all of the telemarketing firms in the world, and we could make press announcements that we're going to have 200 new jobs that'll be here for two years and then gone, and then we could spend our time trying to fill an empty building again. What we're looking for is high-tech jobs, and through Black Hills Vision and some of the others, we were able to put the incubator up in conjunction with the efforts of the School of Mines. Most people don't see that, but by the end of the year, there'll be about 100 jobs in that incubator, good-paying, high-tech jobs. You've got Northrop Grumman, you've got AccuPress, you've got some others that collectively will account for another 100 or so jobs. And, you know, so, that's the new focus, I think. It's not just numbers, but it's types of jobs. And what we've tried to do this last year is look at how we, not just this year, but the last several years, how we approach this recruitment process and what we can do to streamline the process, make it go a little smoother, make it a little easier for the council and some of the other stakeholders to understand what is happening within that organization. So, we've consolidated some of the committees, and we're in the process with Bob's announcement, his resignation, we'll be in the process of advertising and doing a search for a new executive director, and at the same time broaden that approach, get back out again, and look a little harder at some of those tech firms, if you will. And again, it's no secret, following some of the Boise model.
I'd like to just bring one success, one of the many success stories, Pat talked about RPM, AccuPress. I'd like to zero in on Northrop Grumman as a success story that we had this year. We were in competition with Sioux Falls for Northrop Grumman's, and this is, again, was the focus of bringing in high-quality, high-paying jobs with good benefits. We were in direct competition with Sioux Falls. The Economic Development Partnership on very short notice put together essentially a recruit meeting where we had an entire panel of Northrop Grumman, a Fortune 500 company, come into Rapid City, sit around a boardroom. We organized all the key players from people that were with construction, real estate, what type of computer networks are they going to need, what type of, you know, T1 lines for their high-speed networks. We so impressed these guys that we beat out Sioux Falls for 50 jobs, high-paying, good-quality jobs. And it was one of those things where that is the direct, our job as the Economic Development Partnership is to go out there and provide the one-on-one meetings with these corporations. And it's also, as Pat alluded to, to build out the local businesses too, by helping them expand and bring in jobs. We are in a zero-sum game, and this is one of those things where this isn't, you know, necessarily Stephen Covey, win-win. We are in competition with the other cities across the state, with cities across the country, and if we don't have a viable economic development arm that's meeting with the business owners, it's not going to work. Let me put the numbers to it. The, just Northrop Grumman, if you use the governor's office of economic development numbers, just the Northrop Grumman acquisition of 50 jobs is going to have almost $4 million of income through original and multiplier effects, $4 million of income. If they spent everything on that in taxes, in sales taxes, at a 7% rate, it'd be about $275,000 every single year until they relocate. So, think about that, when we're asking about essentially $225,000 from the city, and we bring in one company with 50 good-paying jobs, we've almost paid for, you know, the Economic Development Partnership's budget. So, you can see why this is... So you can see why this is such a critical, when things are slowing down, we really do not advocate cutting economic development because it's like not advertising in hard times, your customers are going to go somewhere else.
Let me just check. How much was, were you guys shorted by chance, or not shorted, not put in the budget? That was totally wrong. $400,000 probably. Sorry about that.
$50,000 out of $225,000. Original request was $225,000, which was the same as last year's. And the shortfall was $50,000.
Thank you. Shortfall is a better way to say it.
Yeah, how's that for politically correct?
Thank you.
That is a point, point I think we should make though, is that it is the same figure from prior years. We did not ask for any increase.
We do have a question from Lloyd La Croix, and just, just one thing before we start. Guys, this is to ask questions tonight, we appreciate everybody giving support to the different groups, but we have time to lobby for those groups and for you, what you want to bring forth, that's their job. Our job at this point is to ask them questions and then when we get down, basically I'll say to the nitty-gritty and where we're putting this money and where we want to put money, that's when we start lobbying in and putting forth our, what we need to do. Thanks, Bill. Anyway, just so we know that, let's stick to the questions so we can get through the next set of the budget. Thank you. Lloyd La Croix.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to make comments. I got a question. I've talked to a few people on the economic development and you said you've made some changes of how you guys are going to do business and it sounds positive to me. Could you give me, give us, everybody a little insight on that?
I'll do some. We'll kind of tag-team that one. We basically, economic development used to have four different entities. You had the Economic Development Partnership, which basically provides the one-on-one business contact that way I described. You've got the Economic Development Foundation, which developed the business parks, business parks, provides some more real estate arms, sometimes provide conduit. You had the Rapid Fund, and then you had the Western Research Alliance. The consolidation we've done is we've taken the Western Research Alliance, we're leaving that separate because sometimes we need a 501(c)(3) to pass for some of our, you know, opportunities. We took the Rapid Fund and we're going to fold that into the Economic Development Partnership. So for all practical purposes, you're going to have a foundation and a partnership, two totally different entities. As far as how we're going to, we're going to try to build on our strengths, the things that have worked in the past, we're going to do, keep doing those, and then we're going to be essentially more offensive, hopefully not offensive, but more offensive going after Fortune 500 companies and not just the high-level individuals there, but their relocation departments. Their site selectors, we're going to target Fortune 500 companies over the next few years and try to get them to find that Rapid City is a successful place to build.
I think, I think the important thing that we've discovered is that we have a much easier time growing businesses, utilizing people that want to be in Rapid City. Tech graduates that have been out 10, 15, 20 years, are in charge of their research department, something of that nature, can convince a corporate office that they're just as well off doing that work in Rapid City, and we're seeing some of that relocation. That's some of the jobs you're seeing out at the incubator. And you have to recognize those things and then you have to build on them and work them. And that's one of the things that we've said we're going to do is work harder at that, developing those, those local people, if you will.
Do you have a follow-up, Lloyd?
Well, I was just going to follow up on what we stated last year. Last year we were kind of talking about what kind of jobs you're bringing in. You say the high-tech jobs and I think Bob had mentioned that you were no longer, you were focusing on jobs that paid over $10 an hour primarily anymore. And so I just kind of want to reiterate that because we get a lot of slack as council members is just bringing in the lower-wage jobs, Lloyd. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Sam, do you have a question? Thanks, Sam.
Pat, I have a question for you and I'll just throw it at you. The question is, what does the loss of, what does a $50,000 budget reduction mean to you, other than $50,000? I mean quantify that for me, what that $50,000 means.
Well, I think right now what it means is restructuring a staff. If we were to lose the $50,000, we'd have to take a completely different approach on how we look at filling this position. And I think now is the worst, I mean, the worst of all times to go to cut it. Because I think somebody made the comment that, well, if you're interviewing and going to hire a new person, maybe you can save some money. The truth of the matter is, I'm not mentioning names, the truth of the matter is, is that when we go out and do a national search and we get somebody in here that really can do the type of job we want them to do, we're probably going to end up spending more money. And I'm not sure where that's going to come from, Sam, but we'll do some scraping and, because I think, you know, this is a classic case, you're going to get what you pay for. Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up, Sam? Thank you. Ron Wytenbach, please.
I'm trying to win on Lloyd's tab. He's keeping track of how many times I talk. I feel compelled to be the winner when I walk out of here, so.
You won, Ron. I'm kidding.
I'm going to pose these as questions, obviously, because I can't make comments and I'll...
Thank you, Ron.
My first question would be, is who's responsible for putting the incubator together? If you could pick one organization and one person, who may be that?
I don't think you can pick one person, Ron. I think, you know, I was sitting there earlier and it's kind of hokey, but you know the old saying, it takes a village to raise a child? I think it takes a group or a coalition of a lot of groups. Without Dr. Ruck at the School of Mines, it would never have happened in its current location. Without Black Hills' vision to clarify the need, I think, it probably wouldn't have happened. Without some of the work done by economic development, it probably wouldn't have happened. So, you know, you can't point to one group or one person.
I've lived in Rapid City for, since 1970. And the business park that's off of Elkvale Road there, used to be an empty lot, it wasn't even that long ago. RPM, those places are in there. How'd that come about? Is sheer luck or would that, would economic development have something to do with that?
I think that's going to be the coordination, the Economic Development Partnership and the foundation. The foundation at that point was more into property management and the business park, and that's something that they're looking at reevaluating their role. But, I mean, that was providing a site, and even now we're continuing to fill that out. RPM is just, they just last month approved for an expansion of RPM so they can, you know, employ more manufacturing jobs. So that would have been probably more under the Economic Development Foundation, but it would in coordination with the partnership.
When I had a conversation with you, David, and you talked about the effects of Northrop Grumman, not only with new positions, but how did it affect other positions of people already working here?
It's a, it's a good question. This is something, it's a sensitive topic, but when you bring in, like, for example, 50 computer programmers, there are very tangible effects across the wage base. South Dakota's got the highest percentage of dual-income families in the country, and I don't think that's necessarily because we all like to work and have our spouses work, but because our wage base is too low for our cost of living. When the Northrop Grumman came with computer programming jobs, there was a very large computer programming employer in Rapid City that issued one-time $10,000 bonuses to all of its programmers within a week of the Northrop Grumman announcements. Coincidence, I think not, okay? But it's got, that's got that multiplier effect. Now, if you're a business owner trying to hold costs down, maybe you don't like competition, but if you're trying to make ends meet at home, maybe that's a good thing from an employee's standpoint.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up, Ron?
Yeah, I just want to ask them when, when they went into existence, economic development, what year?
We've been a successful economic development organization for 20 years, so we've got a proven track record.
Thank you, Ron.
I have one more question, but it made me forget.
Does, Ms. Karen?
There's been conversation about an additional, some expansion of the incubator. Do you have some timeframe for that expansion?
I don't think any of us can point to an exact timeframe. I, oh, Bob, help me. Well, we've got about eight, 10,000 square feet left in the existing incubator. And, you know, we fill the next spot or two, then we'll probably be looking at another facility. You've got to remember that the businesses that go into the incubator are on a three, maybe four-year life cycle. So here in another couple of years, we'll looking, we'll be looking at the first move out. That'll free up some space. So it could be, it could be as quick as a couple of years, it could be as far out as five or six. I just don't know.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Any other questions for economic development, council?
I just, I remembered what I was going to ask. The question was, is the, have you guys started the process of looking for a person to replace Bob in his retirement?
We have the ad finished. We've had a number of people go through that. We're just in the process of placing the ad now. Councilman O'Krepeke's, we've had some discussion with him about different agencies we might look at or different locations we might look to place the ad. We'll, we'll follow, well, we'll get it out in a number of places nationally.
Thank you. Follow-up, Ron?
I just want, what kind of, is it a high-level type person that you'd be looking for?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron Wytenbach. Any more questions, council? Thanks, guys, for coming from economic development. Sounds like we need a 10-minute break if we could. Come back at least quarter till if we could, council?
It's exciting. Yeah, it's exciting. Yeah, it's incredible. Incredible is the word.
Can you play it louder? Oh, yeah. Woo-hoo!
Derek, can I work it, sir? We will.
You did a, oh, I mean, I watched, I watched.
I want you to, I want you to.
Look at them.
I got one more out.
Very bad.
I do a picture of us, and I do.
You're learning more than I'm learning.
Some guy, some guy has a.
Next, the toilet, my doctor.
I got a good job.
For you.
Thanks.
And that's what I wanted. Come down to swing by.
City Council, it is seven forty-five. We are going to resume our meeting, if we could. We have Lifeways next, please. Or, I'm sorry, it's Front Porch Coalition next, please. If they want to come forward.
I'm gonna tell them I believe if they want.
Yes. Hi, ladies. Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate you both coming.
Yeah, it's an FDC. You are?
I'm Todd Mull.
We're gonna. Todd Mull?
Yep.
I'm Karen Olson.
Does that mean, like, Larry and Mull?
Close.
I'm Mull. If I know any other Mulls.
Thank you, ladies. Go ahead. If you'd state your names, please.
Stephanie Switzer Dixon.
I'm Renee Hatcher. Thank you.
I, Todd can introduce himself to.
Hi, Todd.
I'm Todd Mull.
I'm the director of the Front Porch Coalition. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) grassroots organization that raises awareness and works to prevent the incidence of suicide in our community. We also operate a very unique program called the Lost Team. It stands for Local Outreach to Suicide Survivors. I think everyone's familiar with what we do, based on what I had presented a couple of months ago. At that time, I presented Grimm's Statistics, and they do not get any better. Last month, I had four suicides in the county that our Lost Team responded to. Three in one week. And that's what's going on in our community. And it's taking up quite a bit of the time that we would like to spend on prevention, trying to help the families so that they themselves don't become victims of suicide, victims of drug abuse, victims of various mental illnesses. The Lost Team is a very unique program that, one of the first ones that was started in the country was in Baton Rouge. And we received our training from that group there. And they have statistics that prove that when someone is given the immediate support through our Lost Team, the time that it takes them to reach out for help reduces from four years to thirty-nine days. I have two individuals here with me that have been helped by our Lost Team. And I have to say, it is incredible that they're willing to be here to speak, because through my work, I've had people come up to me that have dealt with a suicide from twenty years ago, and they've never told anybody about it. I'm very proud of what we do, but I'm not proud of what's going on in this community. It is very sad to know that all of the suicides that happen, or the majority of the suicides that happen, are happening in Rapid City, out of Pennington County. The statistic that I have, eight suicides have been from kids ages eleven to nineteen during a two-year span. Seven of those, and all seven of those, have lived in Rapid City. Five suicides have been young adults ages nineteen to twenty-five. And three of those, the Lost Team has helped and responded to. I guess I leave questions up to you. And I'd also like to offer the opportunity for the two individuals that came with me to talk about how we've helped them. The benefit that they've had from our services. Our services are free of charge, and we do, all of our donations are private donations. And this isn't a topic that most people open up their pocketbooks to.
We appreciate them both coming tonight, and we would like to hear from them. They've been waiting to talk, so we appreciate them coming, so that would be good. Thank you.
Forgive me. Sorry. I'm the mother of Cameron Jordan. I lost him in January to suicide. And if it wasn't for them responding to my home, I probably wouldn't have been what I am today, which is giving back to my community and try to help other kids. I recently, in July twelfth, did a suicide awareness ride, a motorcycle ride, that raised twenty-four hundred dollars for suicide awareness. And I intend to do it every year. But I don't think I could have done that without their help, to know that they're there if I need them. I've been to every month meeting, and they've been a big support. I think they're gonna be a big help to these kids. And it's like someone said earlier, it takes a village to raise the children. And that's what it's gonna take to maybe limit some of these suicides. It's not gonna bring my son back, but I feel if I can help one other one, then I'm... Something.
We appreciate you, ma'am. We thank you for sharing and coming tonight. We know that's very hard, and we appreciate you, ma'am, for sharing. Do we have one more speaker, please?
I kinda have an unfortunate experience. When I was in high school, I grew up in Spearfish. I had four classmates, two friends of mine that I was very close with, committed suicide from the ages of, let's see, it was seventeen to twenty. And I'd kinda buried a lot of that in the past, stopped thinking about it, and so on. And then my oldest son's best friend committed suicide in September of last year. And I had never heard of the Front Porch Coalition, didn't know a thing about them, but I was over there that night that she had passed away, because I was very good friends with the family. And I saw how they worked, and I was so impressed on how they were handling the situation with the family. Obviously, the family was in complete shock, as I was, as I was there. But I was observing how they were helping the family and helping, just helping them, I guess, for lack of a better word. I don't know. I just thought that was a pretty neat organization to be able to do that for that family. I got involved, I emailed Stephanie probably two or three months after that, because it started bringing up some of my old feelings of my classmates and friends that I'd lost to suicide, and I've decided to be a volunteer. That's how Renee and I have met. We're working together with the Front Porch, trying to promote suicide awareness through different programs through the school. And it's definitely been a big help to me. I mean, we met at a grief counseling session, Renee and I did. I believe that was in February or March, wasn't it? And then we worked together with the poker run, and just an outstanding organization that they have. And again, that's one thing that Stephanie said, there's not a lot of people that are willing to talk about or open up their checkbooks to help out this type of organization. And that's one thing that we're working towards, too, is trying to get rid of the stigma of suicide. No one seems to want to talk about it. But as Stephanie has said, there's a big problem here in Rapid City, especially with young people. And that's where Renee and I are working extremely hard to get rid of that stigma, and let people know that it's okay if you have some depression or some issues. And we have people that you can talk to.
It doesn't make you bad, or you...
Exactly.
It doesn't discriminate. It could be your kid that...
It can happen to anybody, believe me. Of my classmates, one was a senior class president, the other was a state champion wrestler. So it can happen to anybody. Those were my two friends that died.
Thank you, sir, for sharing. We appreciate that. If we could, we have a few questions. Ron Wytenbach, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate you folks showing up tonight, and I'm sorry for your losses. And I, too, attended Mr. Jordan's poker run, but my bike didn't make it all the way through the run. So I was the guy sitting on the side of the road that everybody passed up.
Yeah.
That was me. And you can't get to...
Okay, well, we'll see you next year.
Yeah. The point I would make, Madam Chair, is that these people came forward once to the city council meeting, and then, I'm not sure that they've gotten the correct direction. In my mind is that, we have, last year, when we did our budgeting process, when we got to the subsidy part of our budget process, we increased a specific portion of the budget that had included mental health care, along with the arts. And I'm not sure that, if they need some guidance in that area there to help them through that part of the process.
Good question, Ron. Pauline, do we have the process in which the Front Porch Coalition, how they would get funding from the city council?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that Jackie sent a letter last year, after we received the request, at the mayor's request, to send them the application, or the format in which to apply. I do not recall if the application came in on time or not, or if it came in after the subsidies were already given. But I know Jackie will send letters out again to the entities that are able to apply for those dollars.
If I could ask, ma'am, do you know the process in which the city council gives money to the Front Porch Coalition, or any of the 501(c)(3)Cs, ma'am?
I do. We did receive a donation last year.
Thank you.
Funding from the city subsidy. We received two thousand dollars from the city last year. While that was very helpful, due to what we've been doing over the past year, we had hoped, I guess, as any organization that struggles to make ends meet, so to speak, that there might be additional funding. And I guess what I wasn't aware of is that there is additional funding this year. I am aware of the process, though. And based on the fact that we do assist law enforcement, and we have, as in Renee's case, we were actually asked for assistance by the police department that particular day. And I have offered assistance to them, and am going to be providing them with some additional training so that they can, you know, be aware of the services that we provide. So I guess the intent of us with the request might be, because of the growing need that we have for the services, and for the fact that we are bringing in an expert into our school district to train individuals, and specific to youth suicide prevention, that that is going to take a huge portion of our budget. And in order, you know, to effectively do the prevention work and keep everything going, this is why we've made a greater request this time.
Do you have a follow-up? Ron Wytenbach, please.
I just didn't know if they, if that had... I know there's another organization that does, not specifically suicide, but works within the schools, that maybe...
Lifeways?
Yeah. Yeah, Lifeways.
Okay.
And I'm not sure how they could maybe synergize some of that.
I think with Pauline and our finance department, or with Jackie, they can probably figure out, if I'm correct, the process and then the funding source, or how they go about getting more funding source at that point. But unless the city council has something different. Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is the idea that I would like to float in front of the council and sleep on it tonight. We can continue the discussion tomorrow. But that, and I think this is important, if that's okay.
Okay, that's fine, Sam.
In two thousand and three or two thousand and four, I and some other council members at the time led the effort to create a twenty-five thousand dollar line item appropriation for Wavy, Women Against Violence, Inc. And we're excited about that. And the idea that I had for the Front Porch Coalition is, and it's something I hope other council members will support, is to have a line item in the police department budget, because they perform an auxiliary function. It's very important as a support role for the police department, to have a line item for Front Porch Coalition. In the process of researching this, I found out just last week that the twenty-five thousand dollar line item for Wavy had not been spent ever in the last four to five years. I was stunned to learn that. I'm not sure whether I should be disappointed with the PD, or disappointed with myself for not following up, or disappointed with Wavy for not making sure that they requested the funds. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody.
Sam.
But what I'd like to do is, is I would like to present the idea that
Thank you.
we restore that twenty-five, a twenty-five thousand dollar line item to the budget, at twelve thousand five hundred dollars for Wavy, and twelve thousand five hundred dollars for Front Porch Coalition. I'm gonna present that as a starting point tomorrow. I know Dave Hillard is here. He was actually here for another reason tonight. I asked him if he'd be willing to stay for a few minutes. He can talk about Wavy a little bit, if we can fit it in tonight. But I do believe that it's very important that we put these, put the one organization back in the police department budget where it belongs, and then add the second organization, because these two organizations provide very important support for very difficult situations in our community. And I believe that we need, as a council, we need to step up and support both endeavors.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the Front Porch Coalition? Any other questions, Council? Okay. We appreciate you all for coming, and thank you for your testimonies. We appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Thanks for staying with us tonight. Council, we do have Lifeways next, please. If you'd state your name, ma'am.
Sure. I'm Paula Wilkinson Smith, Executive Director of Lifeways. I'm handing out some trend data. I have handed out other packets of information about Lifeways, and how we, your partnership with us and the state and the schools leverage over three hundred thousand dollars that comes into our community that supports our programming and the youth that we serve. Over thousands of students receive our services through classroom presentations. Hundreds of students receive our support, individual support when they're in trouble with alcohol and drugs, or when they have a parent struggling with alcohol or drugs. We help youth. You've heard many stories this evening, some very passionate about economic development. I'm passionate about youth. So I know you already know quite a bit about Lifeways. I'd just be open to questions. We do an evaluation report, which the data that's on that page that I just passed out is from...
Thank you for coming. We do have a question from Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Paula, my understanding is that past appropriations from the city had been fifty thousand dollars. And that was the appropriation for two thousand and eight as well.
Right.
So tell me the impact, in raw terms, of the impact of not having the fifty thousand dollars for two thousand and nine. What does that mean?
What that could mean is a domino effect of basically not having Lifeways in the community. When the state came into the community to provide the funds, the three hundred thousand dollars for the services in the secondary schools, they came in under a partnership, a three-pronged partnership agreement. And without that one partner backing out, or decreasing, let's say, or whatever, it could be like a domino effect.
Do you have a follow-up, Sam?
I don't know if that's...
But it's matching funds, right? The fifty thousand dollars that we give you, you leverage?
We match, the RBC schools matches that, and the Division of Alcohol and Drugs comes with three hundred, over three hundred thousand dollars.
So your total budget's about half a million dollars?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any other questions? Ms. Karen?
What's the Institute for Educational, Education, and Leadership, Leadership and Evaluation?
Yes, it's Dr. Yousara's Cheeseman Foundation. And that data comes from the RBC Schools Youth Development Survey. I believe you may be familiar with that.
Any other questions, Council, for Lifeways? Lloyd Legrey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I've had the pleasure of being down at your facility, seeing what you do. But I have a question. How many years have you been matching the funds with the city, the school, and the state?
Right. Right. We're going into our sixth school year. So, we've been in the Rappi Schools, working with youth for five years, going on our sixth.
Okay. And I'll just make, I wanna make one comment. I talked to Dr. Warman about the matching funds and he, he confirmed that and that Lifeway does excellent work and relieving their council workload at the school.
Thank you, Lloyd. Any other questions for Lifeways, council? Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate you staying this late with us.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have, uh, number nine would be 911. If you'd state your name, sir. Thanks for staying with us this late.
I'm Don Holloway, Sheriff of Pennington County, and I'm also on the executive board for the 911 user, uh, group, uh, that oversees the 911 dispatch center. And, um, I'm here today, uh, for this evening to talk about, uh, the 911 budget. It was submitted, uh, to the city and I, and I guess I'll just give you a little bit of summary, you, you probably know this, is that a portion of that 911 budget is paid out of 911 user fees that come off your telephone calls or your telephone services. Um, then the balance of it, uh, the balance of that budget is split between the city and the county with the city paying two-thirds, the county paying one-third. And that was originally set up, uh, based upon the number of calls, uh, generated by each agency. And, um, I think we started that in about 1993 is when we set that up and it hasn't been reviewed since. But at any rate, we submitted a budget requesting, uh, the city's share to be $1,045,535. Uh, that would've had the city showing a 14.24% increase. Likewise, the county would have that same increase. Part of the reason this increase is so dramatic is that our 911 funds have decreased, um, and actually, uh, had to, we had to go into the county this year to get a, a loan because we ran short, uh, with 911 funds that we're receiving. Um, those 911 fees have not been increased since that law was put into place. It's at 75 cents per line per month and even though the costs of operating these centers have increased during that period of time, uh, those funds have not increased. For a number of years, we carried a, uh, reserve in that, thinking that we could buy new equipment. Well, um, in 2007, we had to replace the 911 phone system because the old system that we had was no longer being supported by the manufacturer because of its age. That, uh, that took $408,000 out of our 911 funds. And so, uh, those reserves, uh, went away. And so, we've had to make some adjustments, uh, taking, going to, uh, uh, instead of having a, uh, a 60% of, uh, coming from, um, uh, the property tax or the city and the county and 40% from 911 funds, we've had to change that to 35% coming from 911 funds. So consequently, even though the budget didn't go up, uh, 14% for operations over there, uh, the city and the county's portion would, went up 14%. The overall budget, uh, uh, would only shows an increase of 1.4%. Uh, it has been submitted to you, uh, the council, uh, with, with, um, the city's portion being $994,078, which is considerably less than, uh, what we had originally requested. If, a- as I told you before, this is a match between city and county, so with that reduction from the city, we will see a light reduction from the county's portion of it. And as a result, uh, uh, we'll have to cut back on, on staffing. I mean, obviously, staff is your biggest expense in that operation over there. And so, we'll have to do some reduction in staff. We've already, uh, just to try to, um, uh, make some adjustments because of the reduction in the 911 funds, we had already, um, reduced our program to reduce one FTE position. Uh, if we continue with this additional, uh, reduction in funding, uh, we will reduce another one and a half FTEs. And if I was in your position, I'd say, well, what's that, what impacts that gonna have on you? And, and obviously, the people that we have working up there, vast majority of them are people that answer the telephone and dispatch calls. And so, uh, your first assumption would be that's, that's, uh, where you're gonna see some reduction. Do, do we really think that we're not gonna answer the telephone? I mean, uh, for sure, we'll be answering the telephone, but, um, it'll put additional stress on the staff that we have up there if you're working shorthanded and you're having all these phone calls coming in. One of the things that we've tried to do over the last five or six years is build our staffing levels up so that when we're in those crisis situations, we're not burning our dispatchers out and having a continual turnover in staff. Uh, for a number of years, uh, we were turning over staff, um, very quickly. Uh, I'm pleased to say in the last three or four years, we've been able to slow that turnover down. I mean, it is a high burnout job, but we really have been able to slow that down with our staffing levels. If we start reducing our staff again, my expectation is that we're gonna see some, uh, additional turnover in staff, which then, uh, creates, uh, additional problems for your operations, far as training, as far as, um, uh, additional burnout from people that get stressed out on it. So, um, the county has agreed to their portion of it at the original amount that we put in. So, the county's, uh, portion, um, if we, if the city would put in the $1,045,535 would be, the county's portion would be $522,767. And they've agreed to that, uh, that's set in the provisional budget at this time. If, if you reduce to the $994,078, then the county's portion would be $497,39. So, there'll be a like, you know, there'll be, that it's kind of a multiplying effect when you, when this, one side or the other, whether it's the county or the city, uh, make some adjustments in there. So, I'm here to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Holloway. Do we have questions? Ron Wyferbach, please.
Thank you. Do, do I address you as sheriff?
Don is fine.
Okay. All right, Don. I, you know, I dress chief as chief and I've got two chiefs, you know, I've got the sheriff, so, uh, the, the funding on the 911, I, I'm trying to get a grip on how, how, is that only funded by landlines or is it funded by cellphones?
We get some cell, we get cell phones as well. Um, there's, there's this new technology through, and I'm not a computer...
Voice over internet, maybe?
Voice over, yeah. There's been some, uh, controversy over that, whether that is being paid or not being paid. We just went through quite a, a battle with, uh, the phone companies and legislature over these prepaid phones of getting that paid and where that comes back in, but it, it does cover with cellphones as well.
So, there's been a reduction. I mean, I went from one landline to like four cellphones in my family. So, where, how do you, where do you think that...
Um, you know, I, I guess I can't, I, I don't know. Uh, I can tell you that our, our, it appears that our numbers are, are not progressing at the rate that our increase in needs for the funds are, are there. When we first started, actually, when we first started, we, we, um, accumulated money. I mean, we had several hundred thousand dollars setting in the reserves and through the years as, as we, the, the amount of money that we were receiving from 911 funds wasn't keeping up with the amount that we needed, we just pulled those reserves down. And, and, you know, you can call it poor planning on our part, um, we pulled them down too far. We should've, last year, we should've been adjusting that percentage, um, so that we didn't get ourselves in the trouble that we are today.
Thank you. Ron, do you have a follow-up?
Don, oh, thank you.
So, I, so, so, so I guess what I'm trying to tell you is that it, the, the increase in the cell numbers or the increase in the phone, 75 cent phone fees haven't kept up with the same increases that we've needed to operate the center. And so, we've had to go to this, to the property tax or c- city sales tax, other resources to get those funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Um, Sam, please.
Uh, Donna, Sheriff.
Sure.
I have a few questions for you. Um, how many, uh, FTEs, uh, does this organization have now?
They're allocated 41 FTEs and that includes two, uh, radio technicians who take care of the radio towers and do radio work for, for, uh, all of us that use the center in our vehicles as well. So, two of them are radiotecs, um, they have, um, a director, an assistant director and one secretary, the rest are all dispatchers.
Can I follow-ups?
If with this, the way the budget is put together with the, uh, $1,045,000, they'll actually only have funds for 40. If we go down to the lower number, we'll have funds for 38 and a half.
Doug, Doug is retiring.
Yes.
And so, um, you plan to go, go applications, you have, you have a director and assistant director, so approximately 35 of the 41 ways are frontline dispatchers.
Right.
So, then my second question is overtime percentages. Where I'm going with this is, how much overtime are you generating now and would you generate, have to generate even more time to keep your service levels up if that were to be stopped?
Well, you know, you know, overtime is, I, I can tell you that he's spending, uh, about $60,000 a year in overtime and, and we've had to cut that out. I mean, I've just, I've just, uh, said to the staff over there that due to not having the funds, you, you, you can't schedule any more overtime. And, and so, what's happening is that the people that are working in there is just getting more and more work piled on them. I mean, when the phone's ringing and somebody's calling on the radio, they're answering it, but they're not getting any breaks, they're, 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 uh, working at capacity, um, close to 100% of the time during those peak periods.
The amount, the amount of...
The, the amount of the, um, uh, the amount of funds that we're, you're looking, we're looking for to fill the 2009 budget request, I understand is $51,459. Did I calculate that?
Excuse me.
Did I calculate that properly?
I...
$1,045,532 minus $994,000 and change?
I think that's correct.
About $50,000?
Yeah. That's correct.
So, quite frankly, the loss of $51,000 is essentially devastating to the organization's budget, is that a fair statement?
Well, it is because it's not just $51,000 because it's another 25 or 26,000 dollars that are coming from the county side because of the county match that goes with that. So, if you reduce the city's portion, then you have to reduce the county's portion as well. So, you're looking at 70-some thousand dollars.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the sheriff? Bill Krepke?
Thank you. You're saying that if we give you the 145 or 1.45 and the county gives their portion of it, you're still gonna be one FTE short?
That's correct.
So, what's it gonna take to be full, fully staffed?
Well, um, I guess I'm not here to ask for that today. Because, um, I don't think I could go over and sell that same song to the county commissioners. And, and so, I think what we need to do is try to do the best we can. Uh, and being one down, uh, one of the things that both of, of the chiefs and I have talked about is while we're looking for a new director is to go in and do a staffing study and do a wage, um, comparison study for that center as well as a, uh, a needs assessment before we hire a new director, to make sure that what we've been trying to do is appropriate and, and, and if we find out that 41 is the number or 39 is the number or as we've been told 51 is the number, uh, then, then as a group, we'll work on trying to bring that to volition. But, you, you know, for me to try to sell the city for the other one FTE when I know I can't go back and do that with the county, I mean, I just don't think it's right, so...
Do you have a follow-up, Bill?
Uh, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. Any more questions for Mr. Holloway, council? We appreciate you coming, Mr. Holloway.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, we have 10 minutes. Malcolm Chapman?
I'd like to just make a recommendation that maybe we just stop here and, um, it seems as if we, we finish that first part of the agenda tonight and then maybe start in tomorrow morning with the changes to the budget and incorporate the CPI discussion and whatever else comes up tomorrow. Just seems like it's a stop, a great stopping point.
Thank you. Is that, um, the council's wishes at this point? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Eight o'clock tomorrow, council.
Eight o'clock.
It's eight o'clock tomorrow, council. Eight to 11:30, please.
All right.